Regular meeting number 63 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem.
Let us pray. Good and gracious God, Columbus City Council gathers in session this evening conscious of bringing to conclusion many matters before the holiday vacation time and the end of the calendar year. This holiday season which we all look forward to sharing with our families is a precious time to grow even closer to one another and also to you, our good God. In their deliberations as a council this evening, we ask you, our God, to help them to keep in mind the common good as well as the needs of the disadvantaged and the poor, the children and the elderly who often go unnoticed and overlooked in the rush of this holiday season. Help us to remember that it is more blessed to give than to receive, to extend a helping hand in a sympathetic ear to the sufferings and concerns of others. In our service of one another, Lord, help us to remember the importance of rising above any selfish impulses we might harbor or ideologies that exclude rather than include others. May we be instruments of your peace in this world which at times seems so fascinated with war and violence. May all of us, especially the members of this Columbus City Council, be advocates and instruments of peace, harmony, and responsible freedom, people who realize the common bond of humanity that joins all of us together. May we serve you by serving one another and come to know the true meaning of this holiday season that celebrates your care and love for us and encourages our care and love for one another. Amen.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the journal?
So move.
Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein Mills Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Yes, President Ginther, I have one additional letter from the Franklin County Board of Elections addressed to myself, city clerk, dated December 16, 2013. On behalf of the Franklin County Board of Elections, I hereby certify that the board has examined the part petitions for initiated ordinance received by your office from you on December 5, 2013. The number of valid and invalid signatures on the part petitions for the prospective initiative are as follows: total signatures, 17,711; valid signatures, 6,903; percentage of valid signatures submitted relative to the number of total raw signatures, 39%. The total number of voters, electors that participated in the 2013 general municipal election was 89,571. The number of electors who represent 5% of the total electors is 4,478. Please let us know if we may be of further assistance. Sincerely, Jeff Mackey, Operations Director, Franklin County Board of Elections.
Thank you, Clerk Blevins. Are there any resolutions or announcements from members of council? Councilmember Craig. Councilmember Klein.
No resolutions, but I know we have a series of appointments on tonight for area commissioners across the city of Columbus, council president, and I'd like to recognize Lou Eros and Bob Dickershi Eros. If you want to stand up and be recognized, our area commissioners from the south side, congratulations on your reappointment and election. Are there any other area commissioners here that perhaps I'm missing? I want to make sure you get proper notice for all the great work that you do for the city of Columbus. Okay, Mr. Lickety in the back, how you doing? Good to see you. Anyone else? Okay, please, Trent, yeah, Trent Smith, good to see you, Trent, Franklinton. Any others? Okay, well, thank you for all the service that you do to the city of Columbus. The work that you do is invaluable. That's all, council president.
Thank you. Councilmember Mills. Councilmember Paley.
Yes, President Ginther, I do have one resolution. I would like to invite Ms. Farah Majadadi and the CEO and chairperson of Resource International and Dr. Carmen, the president of Resource International, and any other guests to the podium to accept Resolution 0288X 2013 to recognize Resource International, Inc. for receiving the 2013 Global Road Achievement Award. ProjectGrid.com, a division of the local and female-owned business Resource International, Incorporated, had the honor of receiving the Global Road Achievement Award at the International Road Federation World Meeting this past month. The IRF Award ProjectGrid.com's II Collector, the top honor in the Technology Equipment and Manufacturing Award category, which recognizes inventors and manufacturers who integrate, develop, and market new products and/or equipment that advance the road construction industry. The II Collector is powered by Google Maps and is a flexible, customizable asset management system that is used to rate both pavement and non-pavement elements using a handheld device. The software has the capability to flag roadway deficiencies in the field in a matter of seconds, which will make the roadways much safer for motorists. In addition to the recognition at the 17th IRF World Meeting and Exhibition in Saudi Arabia, representatives from ProjectGrid.com and Resource International will also be honored at the Global Road Achievement Awards Luncheon during the Transportation Research Board's Annual Meeting in Washington, DC this evening, I mean, this January. I would first, and I also would like to note that it was just handed to me that there is a certificate of recognition also from Mayor Coleman, which I will present with our resolution. I would first ask that the resolution be passed.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
And the floor is yours.
Resource has been very lucky from the birth of the resource 40 years ago in Columbus, Ohio. And please forgive me, I'm a little emotional because this is really one of the biggest success that Resource International has had and also that with your help and of course the Mayor Coleman, that we have been succeeding in the city of Columbus. And I have always said that staff of the Resource International, they have made it possible for serving the city and estate. And now really is his development, is Carmen's development, and that is something that he can say, it will save lots of money and those things, but this is one of the biggest things that has come, and I hope that he can explain it to you better than I do.
We never thought that this innovation could actually catch up with basically with sending out to the International Road Federation and the selected among international competition among the, all the competitors basically worldwide and in area of technology is a gadget which is physically intelligent. II stands for Intelligent Integration, will bring office and field together in a matter of a second, coordinate and rate the condition of safety elements in a roadway, who saves millions of dollars in terms of overall safety agents, which happened, we did, you know, just, you know, always things happen by thinking, it suddenly jumps out or something happens. So we're glad to be here in Columbus and in fact, the environment allowed us to be able to do this kind of stuff.
Thank you.
So much. We appreciate your help all the time. Thank you.
Any comments from other council members? Council President Ginther.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley and Farah and Carmen. Can't, words can't express how proud we are to have you as part of this community, and I know a number of us were out for a special anniversary earlier this year, and one of the things most remarkable is how many members of your staff have been with you for decades and decades. It really is a great family, and I also want to acknowledge the two of you in particular for demonstrating particularly to folks in this generation that a high-powered, driven, ambitious couple can be successful together and provide a great example for both young men and young women of all that they can achieve. So thank you for coming down tonight. We're pleased to recognize you and proud to call you our partners.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Councilmember Tyson?
Yes, just have a couple of announcements, and the first is in regards to health care that just want to make sure that individuals know that online enrollment began last week for Ohio's newly explained Medicaid program, and if you believe that you're eligible for the Medicaid benefits, you can go to benefits.ohio.gov. That is so important. And then the other one is that, again, in regards to health care, that the comprehensive health insurance reform is provided by the Affordable Care Act. If you want to have insurance by January 1st of 2014, you need to make sure that you've signed up by December the 23rd, and you can go to ohioforhealth.org or call 1-800-648-1176. And it's so important if you don't have health care coverage, to please go online or make that phone call. Also, I want to give my condolences to the Lazarus family for the passing of Robert Lazarus over this weekend, who certainly, the Lazarus family has certainly been a company that have made sure that they've been so supportive of the human services, the arts, employing lots of people in our community. So our condolences go out to that family for the passing of Robert Lazarus. And lastly, it is with sadness and with joy that I want to announce that one of my staff members will be leaving my office and will be leaving on this Friday for a new opportunity at the state of Ohio. He will, Carl Williams, who's worked with me since 2007, will be going to the Ohio Department of Health. He will be the new social service licensing administrator, which means he will be responsible for working with supervising licensing specialists in enforcement and implementation of the state of Ohio's licensure program for health care providers and suppliers. He'll be working with health care facilities, ambulatory surgical facilities, freestanding birthing centers, freestanding dialysis centers, freestanding inpatient rehabilitation facilities, hospice care, maternity licensure, nursing homes and residential care facilities, and pediatric respite care. So he has certainly been a joy to work with since 2007, and I just wish him well as he moves on with his career to be able to take on new responsibilities as he continues to do great work. So it's with sadness but joy that he's leaving, so I'd like for us to give him a round of applause for his service to the city of Columbus. That's all I have in my committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, and congratulations, Mr. Williams. It's been a joy working with you, and this is a great new opportunity for you. Congratulations. Any comments from our elected officials? City auditor? City attorney? Judge Barrows? Any comments from the court? This time, I request that the following ordinances be removed from the consent action portion of the agenda in the Public Service Committee, ordinance 2716-2013. Any other requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? If not, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk?
So move.
Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Development Committee, ordinance 2959-2013. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance 2658-2013. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 2774-2830, 2859, 2876, 2882, 2885-2013. Rules and Reference Committee, ordinance 3042-2013.
The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Resolutions of expression 289X and 270X-2013. Finance Committee, ordinance is 2910-2013. Health and Human Services Committee, ordinance 2723-2013. Development Committee, ordinance is 2879, 2906, 2916, 2920, 2938, 2948-2013. Recreation and Parks Committee, ordinance is 2863, 2903, 2945-2013. Small Minority Business Development Committee, 2918-2013. Technology Committee, ordinance is 2526, 2660, 2690, 2691, 2694, 2862-2013. Public Safety and Judiciary Committee, ordinance is 2772, 2870, 2895, 2905, and 2911-2013. Public Service and Transportation Committee, ordinance is 2749, 2769, 2793, 2842, 2846, 2853, 2854, 2857, 2858, 2875, 2877, 2881, 2941, 2958-2013. Public Utilities Committee, ordinance is 2406, 2480, 2544, 2572, 2636, 2650, 2667, 2698, 2712, 2726, 2737, 2785, 2909, 2931-2013. Appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0233, 234, 235, 249, 250, 251, 253, 254, 255, 256, and 257-2013.
We do have one speaker on the consent agenda this evening, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, welcome to council chambers. If you'd come forward to the podium, share your name, address, any organizations you represent, and I think you have signed up to speak on 2879-2013. You have three minutes, sir.
1612 Rollington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins, the chairman of solid vacant and abandonment properties in the North London area. I just got several questions. I know we talk and talk about just vacant structures, and I notice, you know, I'm probably against this for several reasons, is because, you know, we have some of these structures out here that's been built before 1900s, and, you know, what we all need to do is just try to look at some other avenues to save what we, to try to save what we already have through the Columbus, Ohio area. I would be for this as 120%, and the reason why, if some of this stuff has got to go, there only can be three purposes to this, is it's all been gone, been eaten up by termites or whatever else. And again, I'm really not for this, is because we are losing some of our history in some of these vacant structures. So again, I already intubated, I'm probably against this. I would just like to have more clarification on this. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Any questions or comments for Mr. Wilkins? Director Shoney, any additional information on 2879 that we ought to be aware of?
President Ginther, members of council, thank you for the opportunity. This ordinance is to allow us to have sufficient funding for the removal of asbestos from buildings that we're having to tear down. It's not something that we like to do to tear down pieces of our history, as Mr. Wilkins rightly points out, but in some cases, these houses are just beyond repair, and when there's asbestos in the houses, it is an additional expense that we have to have sufficient funding for.
Thank you, Director. Any questions for the Director? Now, may I have a motion for approval of these items designated as consent actions?
So move.
Sarah Sek. Clerk call the roll by voice.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein? Mills?
Yes, with the exception of ordinance 2572 and 2636 on which I am abstaining.
Paley? Tyson? President Ginther?
Yes, consent agenda carries. We'll now proceed with second reading of 30-day table in the emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you. This evening in finance, I have four ordinances that I'll be introducing, authorizing the city to issue and provide refunds on up to $167.7 million in outstanding general obligation bonds. This action will give the city an opportunity to save taxpayers up to $3 million in interest payments by refinancing the debt on these bonds and taking advantage of changes in our market. And with that, I'm going to ask Auditor Dorian, if he wants to make any comments before I start reading the ordinances.
Thank you, Chairwoman Tyson and all council members. You have certainly explained the ordinances correctly. I would caution all of us on the amounts recited. We're asking for the maximum amounts that we see possible. As interest rates continue to rise, and they are rising, we may not issue this amount. We may issue less than this, but we want to be prepared to take the maximum advantage that we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Auditor Dorian. And so with that, the first ordinance is ordinance number 2933-2013, is to authorize issuance of unlimited tax bonds in the amount not to exceed $63,995,000 for the purpose of providing funds to refund certain outstanding general obligation bonds of the city pursuant to Section 55B of the city charter. And first of all, I have a motion to waive second reading.
Second.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Second.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2934-2013, to authorize the issuance of unlimited tax bonds federally taxable in an amount not to exceed $40,660,000 for the purpose of providing funds to refund certain outstanding general obligation bonds of the city in Section 55B of the city charter. First, I move to waive second reading.
Second.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2935-2013, to authorize the issuance of limited tax bonds in an amount not to exceed $47,545,000 for the purpose of providing funds to refund certain outstanding general obligation bonds of the city, Section 55B of the city charter. I have a motion to waive second reading.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you, and now I'd like to move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. And the last ordinance is ordinance number 2936-2013, to authorize the issuance of the limited tax bonds which are federally taxable in an amount not to exceed $15,510,000 for the purpose of providing funds to refund certain outstanding general obligation bonds of the city, Section 55B of the city charter. I move to, a motion to waive second reading.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2772-2013, to amend the 2013 capital improvement budget, to authorize the city auditor to transfer funds between projects within the Construction Management Capital Improvement Fund and to declare an emergency. These transfers are needed because the various projects have been completed and the monies are no longer required for those projects. The completed projects' remaining balances include approximately $686,562, and I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. I'd now like to move to Health and Human Services. Thank you. The first ordinance in that committee is 2856-2013, to authorize and direct the Board of Health to modify and increase a contract for translation interpretation services with access to Interpreters LLC, to authorize expenditure of $6,000 from the Health Special Revenue Fund and to declare an emergency, and I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. I'd now like to recognize Councilmember Mills.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Tonight, in Health and Human Services Committee, I present ordinance 2922, to authorize and direct the Board of Health to modify and increase an existing contract for the provision of housing services with AIDS Resource Center, Ohio, to authorize expenditure of $80,000 from the Health Department Grants Fund and to declare an emergency. In June, city council authorized the Board of Health to enter into a contract with AIDS Resource Center in the amount of $400,000. The contract provides housing to eligible persons with HIV or AIDS in central Ohio, Franklin, Leaking, Delaware, Moro, Union, Madison, Pickaway, and Fairfield counties for the contract period of June to February 28. This additional $80,000 is provided through the Health Department's Ryan White Part A Grant, and emergency action is requested in order to avoid any delays in providing program services. I first like to request to amend to 30-day.
Craig?
By voice, I apologize.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein? Mills?
Yes.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson? President Ginther.
Next, I'd like to waive second reading by voice.
Second.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Yes.
Abstain.
Abstain.
President Ginther.
And next, if there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage by voice.
Craig?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
Paley?
Yes.
Tyson?
Abstain.
President Ginther.
Ayuda Florida, Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. And the last ordinance in Health and Human Services is ordinance 2965-2013, to authorize and direct the appropriation of $40,000 within the Columbus Neighborhood Initiatives Fund, to authorize and direct the transfer of $40,000 from the Neighbor Initiatives Fund to the Health and Special Revenue Fund, to authorize and direct the expenditure of up to $40,000 from the Health Special dollars from the Health Special Revenue Fund, to authorize the director of the Columbus Public Health to enter into a contract with Nationwide Children's Hospital for the implementation of the Columbus Infant Mortality Reduction Task Force and to declare an emergency. And with that, I will, um, move to amend the title to thirty day by voice.
Craig.
Yes.
Klein. Mills.
Yes.
Paley.
Yes.
Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginther.
Thank you, and now I'd like to move to waive second reading by voice.
Craig. Klein. Mills. Paley.
Yes.
Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginther.
And last, I want to move for passage by voice.
Craig.
Yes.
Klein. Mills. Paley.
Yes.
Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginther.
Thank you. President Ginther, just want to, uh, mention the budget hearing schedule for the two thousand and fourteen budget. Um, I'm sure Councilmember, uh, Klein will make an announcement, but also, um, this Tuesday, which is tomorrow, at five o'clock, we'll have Development, Recreation, and Parks Budget Hearing, and then Wednesday, the eighteenth, we'll have a budget hearing for, um, public comment. Speaker slips will be accepted until six-thirty, and the meeting will last until, um, every speaker has an opportunity to testify. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Our next committee is the Administration Committee. Councilmember Craig chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, floor is yours.
Uh, thank you, President Ginther. A number of ordinances, ordinances before council for consideration tonight incorporate provisions of the Affordable Care Act, uh, that will be effective January the first of two thousand and fourteen. Director Christie will provide a brief overview, uh, and we will address each ordinance separately. Director Christie.
Thank you, Chairman Craig. President Ginther, members of council, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to provide a brief overview of pertaining to the number of ordinances before council for consideration this evening. Effective January one, two thousand and fourteen, in accordance with the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act, the city is obligated to provide certain preventative care services based upon age, gender, and other factors to eligible health insurance plan participants without cost sharing, meaning no copayments, no co-insurance, and no deductibles. Uh, these services include mammograms, cervical cancer screenings, prenatal care, infant and adolescent immunizations, and other services that are recommended by the United States Department of Health and Human Services and the Center for Disease Control. The services have to be provided by doctors and healthcare professionals that are within the plan's network. Also effective January one of two thousand and fourteen, the Affordable Care Act requires two additional changes. All waiting periods for enrollment in the city's comprehensive health insurance plan must not exceed a period of ninety days. Therefore, the one-year waiting period for dental and vision coverage that is currently applicable to many of the city's new employees will be reduced to ninety days. Additionally, for new enrollees, the coverage may not be denied based on a pre-existing medical condition. Uh, the MCP ordinances that are before council for consideration reflect each of these changes. Uh, we've worked very diligently with our employee benefits consultants, Aon Hewitt, to project the cost of these changes, and these projections have been factored into to the two thousand and fourteen budget and will be reflected in the appropriations for the various lines of health insurance coverage. Uh, we have also executed letters of agreement with each of the unions subsequent to meeting with them and then briefing them on these changes. Uh, five of the ordinances before council this evening are to accept the letters of agreement executed with the unions and thereby to incorporate the Affordable Care Act mandate- mandated changes, uh, into the respective contracts. Uh, these ordinances will be in the Administration Committee as well as in the Safety and Judiciary Committee. Uh, thank you very much for your time and your consideration. I respectfully urge your passage of each of these ordinances.
Uh, thank you, Director Christie, for your, uh, your overview. Uh, if there are no questions, I'm going to move directly into the, the ordinances. Uh, twenty-seven thirteen dash two thousand and thirteen to accept ordinance number twenty-seven thirteen dash two thousand and thirteen, the Management Compensation Plan effective January the first, two thousand and fourteen, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or concerns, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Uh, twenty-seven, I'm sorry, um, let me move from this. Uh, twenty-eight oh five dash two thousand and thirteen to accept memorandum of understanding number, uh, two thousand and thirteen dash zero one executed between representatives of the City of Columbus and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal- Municipal Employees, otherwise known as ASME Ohio Council Eight, Local sixteen thirty-two, which amends the collective bargaining contract, uh, April the first through March the thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is assigned pay ranges to the new classification of wastewater, uh, pretreatment specialist, and fuel system technician to adjust the pay ranges of wastewater chemist one and supportive services advisor, and also in, to increase the minimum hourly rate for the following, uh, class titles, education program instructor, instructor, and recreation instructor to comply with state minimal, minimum, uh, wage law. If there are no question or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Uh, twenty-eight seventy-four dash two thousand and thirteen to accept the letter of agreement between the city and the Columbus Municipal Association of Government Employees, otherwise known as CMAG, uh, CWA Local forty-five oh two regarding health benefits plan enhancement- enhancements effective January the first, uh, two thousand and fourteen, and to declare an emergency. If there are no question or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Uh, twenty-eight ninety dash two thousand and thirteen to authorize the Director of the Department of Human Resources to modify an existing contract with Policy Works LLC for the purpose of providing planning and consulting services for the City of Columbus, uh, twenty, uh, twenty-fourteen, um, Black History Month Celebration to authorize expenditure of an additional five thousand dollars for a total of twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars from the general fund and to declare an emergency. The Department of Human Resources has been hosting the city's Black History Month Celebration for several years. The two thousand and fourteen celebration is scheduled for February the first, two thousand and fourteen, at the Lincoln Theater. This year's program will include Marion Wright Edelman of the Children's Defense Fund. She founded the Washington, Washington Research Project, a, a public interest law firm, and the parent organization of the Children's Defense Fund. For two year, two years, she served as the Director of the Center of Law and Education at Harvard University, and in nineteen seventy-three became, uh, the CF, the CDF. Uh, in October of this year, the Department of Human Resources entered into the con- the contract with Policy Works to provide planning and consulting services and to receive and disburse funds to support the two thousand and fourteen Black History Month Celebration. The amount of this contract was nineteen thousand five hundred dollars. Since entering into this contract, Policy Work has been able to secure the agreement with Ms. Edelman on behalf of the City of Columbus. However, Ms. Edelman's fees will exceed the original budget of this portion of the program. The department wishes to modify the existing contract with Policy Work LLC to allow for Ms. Edelman's participation in the program. The modification will add five thousand dollars to the contract for a total amount of twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
And then, uh, twenty-nine seventeen dash two thousand and thirteen to accept the letter of agreement between the city and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council Eight, Local sixteen thirty-two regarding the health benefits enhancements effective January first, two thousand and fourteen, and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
And then finally, twenty-nine twenty-four dash two thousand and thirteen to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer three hundred twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars of the, uh, appropriation authorized within the general fund, to authorize the Community Relations Commission to modify the contract, uh, with Centra, Centrepel, uh, Pedal Strategies and Murphy Epsom, Inc., for the continued development of comprehensive community input and initiative, uh, implementation plan to authorize an expenditure of three hundred twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars and to declare an emergency. The purpose of this ordinance is to, uh, appropriate three hundred twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars for continuation of professional services for the Southern Gateway revi- revitalization project. This ordinance authorized the, the appropriation and transfer of three hundred twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars from the general fund to the Community Relations Commission. Uh, the ordinance also authorized the Community Relations Commission to modify the contract with Centra, Centra Pedal Strategies and Murphy Epsom, Inc., for the completion of the community input and initiative implementation plan to supporting budgets for the Southern Gateway revi- revitalization, uh, project devoted to the revitalization of the south- Southern Gateway, uh, southern Parsons Avenue area of the South Side of Columbus. The, uh, cons- the consultant was awarded the contract in December two thousand and twelve by the Director of the Community Relations Commission and the Appropriation Review Committee representing the Department of Development. The, um, Community Relations Commission, the Community Development for All People, and the United Way of Central Ohio, the, um, Columbus Foundation, the South Side Area Commission, and the Parsons Avenue Merchants Association. To date, the planning process has provided the framework for a shared vision and strategic plan. The next step is to finalize the implementation plan, which will serve as the foundation of the Southern Gateway, uh, community by incorporating its existing and future projects among current and future champions and supporters of the effort to revitalize the Southern Gateway, Southern Parsons Avenue on the South Side of Columbus. Emergency action is requested to continue the work of the Southern Gateway revitalization planned and implementation process without interruption. If there are no questions or concern, oh, I'm sorry, we do have a speaker on this, on this ordinance, Mr. Bob, uh, Leithe, and, uh, sir, if you'll begin to approach the podium. And he has indicated, uh, support of this legislation. Sir, if you will give your name and address and any organization that you represent, and, sir, you have three minutes.
Sure. Thank you. Uh, Bob Leithe, twelve eighty South Forest Street, and I'm here representing, uh, the, I'm Executive Director of the Parsons Avenue Merchants Association. And I would just like to say that, uh, this is, this is an important moment, uh, for the South Side. This has been wonderful work. It was really, almost about a year and a half ago, a group of us working with, uh, you know, Erica Clark Jones, the Community Relations Commission, all kind of folks, Development Department, were interviewing different groups, uh, different teams for this. And so, Terrapite Strategies and Murphy Epsom, uh, were the group we selected, and they have really stepped up. There's been an amazing effort over this last year plus, uh, within the community. I think we, it's been very productive. There will be a nice slick shiny document, but there's going to be a lot more. You know, it's important that we had actionable things in there, actionable recommendations, and we're heavily focused at this point on the implementation, and these dollars will enable us to move forward, you know, on that. So, I just can't thank you enough. There's going to be a, a continued, uh, a big new effort on outreach. We're actually starting a new, uh, South Columbus newspaper. Uh, we're going to be hosting that on a new website that Pam has created, allthingsouth.org. Um, there are just, there are a number of redevelopment kind of things that are in the works, and, uh, this is going to really help us with that. So, anyway, I just wanted to give my two cents worth here and to also wish Carl good luck.
Uh, before you leave, Bob, did you have comments, Ms. Tyson, or someone comments today?
Uh, thank you, Chairman Tyce, Chairman, Chairman Craig. Um, I just want to say thank you to, uh, see Judy, you're sitting in the back, Judy Karnacki. I want to also thank Erica Clark Jones and all the individuals in the community who are, who are working together, who have presented this great document, it's a draft, but certainly showcasing all the work that's been, that you've been working on to get us to this point today, and really do look forward to the continual improvements in the South Side of our, of our city. And just want to say thank you for you, for coming down this evening, and thank you for your support in being a part of such a major initiative in our community. Thank you.
Bob, let me also, before you leave, certainly acknowledge your work. You just have done a yeoman's job, uh, in terms of Merchants Association and your, uh, important work, uh, with the Civic Association that you represent and others, uh, and certainly to Erica and to our consultants, that, that truly, uh, for folks to recognize from which we've come, uh, it is a wonderful area, uh, in our city, and certainly the support that has been given, the leadership that has been rendered, uh, has certainly not been short of just excellence. And so I want to personally compliment, uh, all of you for the, for your work and your continued work. We're excited about what's happening on the South Side of Columbus, and certainly look forward to, uh, to all of the future planning, uh, that, that will be occurring on the South Side. Thank you so much for coming down tonight. Uh, if there are no additional, uh, comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you, President Ginther. That is all that I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Craig. Our next committee is the Development Committee. Councilmember Klein chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Ginther. Tonight in Development, two-five-five-two, two thousand and thirteen, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a grant agreement with Wonderland Columbus to assist in offsetting costs needed for site reviews, assessment, testing, and due diligence for the property located at five hundred West Broad Street, to authorize the appropriation transfer and expenditure of fifty thousand dollars within the general permanent improvement fund and to declare an emergency. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Two-eight-eight-four, two thousand and thirteen, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a Columbus downtown office incentive program agreement with Ohio Health Group LTD as provided in Columbus City Council Resolution eighty-eight X two thousand and seven, adopted June four, two thousand and seven. Uh, if I understand this correctly, Director Shoney, this is the relocation of forty-one jobs with, uh, investment by, uh, Ohio Health, as well as the creation of sixty-five new jobs for, you know, I guess it'd be a total of a hundred and six jobs, right?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, President Ginther, members of council. Your, your math is correct on that. Um, in addition to being a, a good number of new jobs, the compensation on these jobs is substantial. Um, Ohio Health had outgrown one of their facilities. They had the option of moving anywhere in the Columbus metro area. We worked with them to find a facility downtown, and we're very excited to have them coming downtown.
Good work, Director. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Second. Craig.
I'm sorry, I called the roll by voice. My apologies.
Craig.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Mills. Paley. Tyson. President Ginther.
Twenty-nine fifty-three, two thousand and thirteen, to renew and expand the Jeffrey Residential Community Reinvestment Area to authorize real property tax exemptions established in sections thirty-seven thirty-five point sixty-five to thirty-seven thirty-five point seven-zero of the ORC and to declare an emergency. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Twenty-nine seventy-one, two thousand and thirteen, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development or his designated to acquire and maintain properties within the East Franklinton Planning Area to execute any and all documents necessary for conveyance of title to the Columbus Next Generation Corporation to amend the two thousand and thirteen capital improvements budget, to transfer cash between projects within the same fund, to authorize the expenditure of a million dollars from the development taxable bond fund, and to declare an emergency. Director Shoney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, President Ginther, members of council. This ordinance will provide us with funding to acquire properties in East Franklinton as well as the authority to transfer those properties to, um, Next Gen Corporation. The, uh, the reason we're doing the transfer and getting authorization for the transfer is some of these properties that we're looking to acquire, uh, we do believe could be rented productively to companies to run businesses out of, and we want to be able to do that quickly and efficiently.
Any questions or comments for the Director? I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther. Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
2975, 2013, to dissolve seven separate community redevelopment areas, which are all presently located within the boundary of the Columbus Downtown Community Reinvestment Area, repealing the authorizing legislation, any related amendments to that legislation, and to declare an emergency. I think this is your final piece, Director. What's going on with 2975?
What we're doing with this piece is essentially clearing the books of some old CRA areas that are no longer in use, but we still have to file reports with the state on, so this is simply a paperwork cleanup, if you will.
Okay. Any questions or comments for the Director? I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
And as Councilmember Tyson noted, there will be a development hearing and Recreation and Parks tomorrow at 5:00. Prior to that hearing, there will be a hearing that Councilmember Mills and I will be co-chairing regarding code enforcement, the current state of our housing code, featuring the city attorney, among others, including the Department of Development. I don't want to start going down a list, because then I'll forget everyone that actually is coming, so I'll stop there, because I know for sure, being members of the city, that they would be participating about what's going on with our housing code and the opportunities that we have moving forward, to strengthen our codes, to hold landlords accountable, to ensure that our neighborhoods are the great places that they are. So that's from 3:00 to 5:00. Immediately following will be Development and Recreation and Parks Budget Hearing. Moving on to Recreation and Parks, sir. 2688, 2013, to authorize the Director of the Columbus Recreation and Parks Department to execute those documents prepared and approved by the Columbus City Attorney, Real Estate Division, to quick claim grant and access and construction easement to the Homewood Corporation and Ohio Corporation upon portions of the city's real property located at Franklin County Tax Parcels 50540-283138 and 010-283137. I first request to remove from the table.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
2828, 2013, to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to amend a grant from the Ohio Department of Transportation to increase the amount by $478,000 for a total of $3,912,787 for the Goodell Street Bike Improvements Project, and to declare an emergency. I first request to move from the table.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Director McKnight.
Councilman Klein, President Ginter, members of council, this is a section of the bikeway that, it's a small piece, but it's an important piece. It's a connector from the Olin Tangi Trail over by Goodell Boulevard, which will cross to the west side of Goodell Boulevard or to 315 and the Olin Tangi River and tie into the district over there. And we had to go through a process. We rebid that project the first time with the grant we had from ODOT. After the bids came in high, we reworked it, we rebid it, and then ODOT has agreed to contribute additional funding to this, so this is that additional funding.
Thank you, Director. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
2883, 2013, to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into a revenue-generating contract with American Healthway Services LLC for the implementation of the Silver Sneakers Program, and to declare an emergency. I first request to remove from the table.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Director, I know we have some tremendous senior programming available in the city of Columbus. How does this legislation, the Silver Sneakers Program, complement that?
Silver Sneakers has been around for a number of years in other communities and other facilities in central Ohio. It's one that we've talked to. They'll come in and run this program for seniors. It's a health wellness program, an exercise program. They get reimbursed out of Medicare to pay for this, so there's no cost to the department to be able to offer this program. And it's part of getting that opportunity to offer healthy lifestyles for our seniors.
Terrific. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Next is 2913, 2013, to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into separate contracts with Easy Links Golf, Inc., for each of the city's golf courses to provide an online reservation system, a mobile application, the design of a new website, and a point-of-sale system, and to declare an emergency. I first request to remove from the table.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
This legislation speaks for itself of just updating the way that golf reservations may be made, which is always an exciting opportunity to streamline the system and make that available. I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Next is 2915, 2013, to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into 10 contracts for the provision of services to older adults in central Ohio in connection with the My Care Ohio Enrollment Assistance Program administered by COAA, to authorize the expenditure of $350,000 from the Recreation and Parks Grant Fund, and to declare an emergency. Director McKnight.
Councilman Klein, President Ginter, members of council, this is a program, again, through COAA where we'll be offering services to seniors, much like the passport programs, a one-year agreement, and there are 10 agencies that will be providing those services to the seniors, so looking for support for this ordinance.
Any questions or comments? I move for passage. I move to amend to 30 days.
Craig Klein, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Move to waive second reading.
Craig Klein, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Move for passage.
Craig Klein, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Finally, 2950, 2013, to authorize and direct the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into a contract with Excel Engineering LLC for professional services related to HVAC improvements, 2014, designed to authorize the expenditure of $225,100 and a contingency of $22,000 for a total of $247,100 from the voted Recreation and Parks Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
Council President, in the President Pro Tem's absence, I'd like to go directly to technology. In technology, 2422, 2013, to authorize and direct the city auditor to transfer appropriation of $113,800 between object levels within the Department of Technology Internal Services Fund, direct charge budget for DPU in order to provide the funding necessary to cover expenditures for the remainder of the year. To authorize the Director of the Department of Technology on behalf of the Department of Public Utilities, to enter into an agreement with Canadian Time Systems Doing Business's Key Tracer Systems, Inc., for purchase and installation of an electronic key management system at $174,085, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code and to declare an emergency. Deputy Director Bodai, could you touch upon waiving the city code on this particular piece of legislation?
Yes, I believe that this was competitively bid before, and that it went beyond the timelines for the legislative process.
Do you have any questions or comments for the Deputy Director? I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
2653, 2013, to authorize the Director of the Department of Technology to modify a contract agreement with Information Builders, Inc., to purchase additional professional services to assist in implementing a business intelligence system for the Department of Public Utilities, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of $456,800 from the Department of Technology Internal Services Fund, $120,000, I'm sorry, $120,320 from the Information Services Division Capital Improvements Fund, and to declare an emergency. Deputy Director Bodai, the same thing on the waiving competitive bidding in this provision? I'm sorry, in this ordinance?
That is correct. Actually, this, this was competitively bid before. This is a modification of the contract. It allows the Department of Technology to work with the Department of Public Utilities to develop an interface to, for business intelligence, to get more timely information for management decisions. So it's just an extension of the existing contract that was previously bid.
Okay. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
2791, 2013, to amend the 2013 capital improvement budget, to authorize the transfer of appropriation in cash between projects, to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management on behalf of the Department of Technology to establish a contract with Palmetto Construction for the renovation of the CTV Columbus Government Television Studio, 90 West Broad Street, to authorize the expenditure of $33,847.13 from the Government Super Build America Bonds Fund, $158,917.89 from the Government Build America Bonds Fund, $247,234.98 from the Department of Finance and Management Office of Construction Management Improvement Fund, and $726,677 from the Information Services Division Capital Improvement Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginter.
That's all that there is in technology, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Our next committee is the Public Safety and Judiciary Committee. Councilmember Mills chairs that committee. Madam Chair, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginter. Tonight, the first 14 ordinances in Public Safety and Judiciary Committee involve the liquor objection process. Each year, liquor permit holders are required to renew their permits. The state law does not grant cities the authority to revoke or deny the renewal of liquor permits on their own. However, under Ohio law, Columbus City Council has the right to object to renewal of liquor permits and request a hearing based on those objections. Each year, city council exercises its right to submit resolutions specifying the reasons for the objections to the Division of Liquor Control for their consideration. This is what we have in front of us today, 14 establishments, of which we would like to present for objections. The Division has a sole authority to grant a renewal or uphold the city's objection. It's important information to share with the community that this sole authority rests with the Division of Liquor Control. The Office of the City Attorney, Attorney Pfeiffer, Columbus Division of Police, lead the investigative process. City Council uses this information obtained during the investigation to determine whether legally sufficient evidence exists to support an objection. In addition to the City Attorney's Office and the Columbus Division of Police, particularly the Vice Section, the members in my office provide a good bit of background and communication with constituents and citizens in regards to a lot of the establishments presented this evening. There are eight major steps in the annual liquor permit renewal objection process, beginning with identifying the problem establishments, investigating the establishment, evaluating the evidence received. Receive the city attorney's recommendation based on the evidence, adopt the resolution at council. We hold a public hearing that allows the city and permit holders to present evidence. The possible appeal also exists for those individuals with the Division of Liquor Control's decision. Throughout this year, I had the opportunity to speak with several block watch groups and many community members, including air commissioner meetings, and just as approaching in, in everyday operating throughout the city, hearing from residents about certain establishments in their community. I want to thank the folks in my office for taking all those calls. We received quite a bit of calls from the community in regards to problem establishments. We've been collecting this information from residents since July, and the police have been certainly investigating the establishments that were provided to us to take a look at some of the nuisance and information received by community residents. I've met with Vice Section and City's Attorney's Office on several occasions to narrow down our list and to choose the worst offenders. I ask Commander Gary Cameron of the Narcotics Bureau, which includes the Vice Section, to please stand. Thank you for you and your team, please. I would also like to ask that Bill Spurlaza provide some information before proceeding to the resolutions for tonight's establishment. Bill Spurlaza is Assistant City Attorney, and he will discuss these establishments. Bill?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Mills, member of council. My name is Bill Spurlaza, Assistant City Attorney, City Attorney Richard C. White. Some quick thank yous. This is a long process, and it took a large group of folks to get it done. Councilmember Mills and her staff are fantastic to work with. Thank you all very much. Members of the NAG group and the Columbus Police Department, Sergeant Soha, Detective Brown, Detective Rosser, were obviously very important in gathering evidence in these cases, also Agent Safety. There are 14 permits we're going to discuss this evening, two of which at the end are renewals from last year's group. With these particular 14, or excuse me, these 12 new permits, we believe there is sufficient reliable evidence that these establishments are operating in disregard of the law, and that their operation substantially interferes with the safety and well-being of the neighborhood. The first resolution, 0272X2013, that pertains to permit number 6292073, that is held by Nahil, doing business as Bee's, this establishment, that they engage in the practice of purchasing resale. We have a dozen instances where law enforcement has been inside the establishment and have acquired the evidence pertaining to sale of stolen property, purchasing sale of stolen property. In addition to that, we have at least five instances of illegal cigarette and/or alcohol sales in 2013. That includes underage sales of alcohol, underage sale of tobacco, illegal Sunday sales of alcohol. All sales of stolen property, alcohol and tobacco were made by either the manager of this property or the manager's, the manager's wife's name. In addition, the manager of Bee's Food Mart has a significant criminal history as it pertains to illegal tobacco and alcohol sales. Second resolution is 0273X-2013. That will be permit number 0084368, AJ2LLC, that is doing business as the Buzz In Buzz Out at 5925 Carl Road. Again, 0273X2013, permit number 0084368, AJ2LLC, that is doing business as the Buzz In Buzz Out at 5925 Carl Road. When we discuss this permit, we will also discuss resolution 0274X-2013. That is permit number 4403823. That's owned by JSLLC. It's doing business as the Happy Place, and if you'll notice, the address here is 5935 Carl Road, is directly above the previous 5925 location. With both of these locations, we have multiple occasions of underage sale of alcohol, illegal tobacco sale, sale of counterfeit DVDs, sale of pornographic material to minors. In addition, the manager of the Buzz In Buzz Out is the permit holder at the Happy Place Bar. This manager has been convicted of operating a boot joint at the 5935 establishment, a boot joint being an after-hours club providing alcohol without a permit. In addition, the boot joint was being supplied by the Buzz In Buzz Out establishment, which was downstairs. In addition, the aforementioned manager and holder of the second About two resolutions again, 0275X2013. That's permit number 1401100. This is held by the Charlie Bear Land of Dance LLC, doing business as the Charlie Bear Land of Dance, formerly at 1562 North High Street. Again, this is another instance where we'll look at two permits at the same time. The second one is resolution 0276X2013. That is permit number 11774950005. That is held by Cadillac Boost LLC, also doing That is held by Cadillac Boost LLC, also doing business at the Charlie Bear Land of Dance at their new location, two-eight-eight-five Olin-Tangie River Road. Both permits here are held by the same individual as a member of those corporations. The establishment, like I said, was at North High Street, and it moved to the Olin-Tangie River Road location in November. Sixteen instances in two thousand and thirteen of underage individuals found to be in possession of alcohol at this bar, one of which included a sixteen-year-old female. Earlier this month, we had a customer brandishing a firearm who was shot and killed by special-duty police officers. The establishment has also been cited for insanitary conditions of alcoholic beverages in May, and in a ten-month period, has thirty-eight calls for service and thirty-eight police reports taken. This represents a drain on communities' resources. Next resolution is zero-two-seven-seven-X-two-thousand-and-thirteen. That is permit number zero-zero-nine-zero-five-four-nine. That is held by Al Wadat LLC, and it is doing business as the Eureka Market at one-ninety-two South Eureka Avenue. At the Eureka Market, we have, we believe the evidence will show that there are at least ten instances of food stamp fraud that have occurred here in two thousand and thirteen. In addition, we believe the evidence will show thirteen instances of buying and selling stolen property at this establishment. Of those twenty-three instances of criminal activity, five have included the illegal sale or transaction of alcohol, and five involved the illegal sale or transaction of tobacco. Resolution zero-two-seven-eight-X-two-thousand-and-thirteen. That is permit number eight-zero-six-zero-one-four-six. That is held by She's Had Mart Incorporated, and it's doing business as the Food Max. The address there is one-seven-seven-six Parsons Avenue. At this location, we have evidence of at least eight instances of food stamp fraud and of at least three instances of buying and selling stolen property. Of these eleven instances, two have involved alcohol, four have involved tobacco. In addition, recently, a warrant was executed by law enforcement. The owner was arrested. Food stamp cards, gaming machines, cash were found, and multiple fire and code violations due to deplorable conditions. Resolution zero-two-seven-nine-X-two-thousand-and-thirteen, permit number three-nine-five-three-three-zero-four. That is held by Home Market LLC, and is doing business as the Home Market at two-three-eight-six Groveport Park. With this establishment, we are talking about bath salts. This and other synthetic drugs have become a dangerous part of the drug culture. We have at least eight occasions at the Home Market of law enforcement making undercover purchases of bath salts from the clerks there at the Home Market. Resolution zero-two-eight-zero-X-two-thousand-and-thirteen. That is permit number eight-one-nine-nine-nine-two-seven. At sixteen-fifty, excuse me, that is held by sixteen-fifty Parsons Incorporated, doing business as the Parsons Market at sixteen-fifty Parsons Avenue. At the Parsons Market, we have evidence of fourteen instances of food stamp fraud in two thousand and thirteen. Seven of those have included the transaction of alcohol. Two of them have included the transaction of tobacco. All of the transactions involved there were done with the CEO of sixteen-fifty Parsons Incorporated, the holder of the permit. Resolution zero-two-eight-one-X-two-thousand-and-thirteen, number seven-two, or permit number seven-two-four-six-nine-six-nine. That is being held by the Red Zone Twelve LLC, and is doing business as the Red Zone at three-oh-three South Front. With the Red Zone, we have at least four sales of alcohol to underage individuals in the premises, including two, I believe, in the month of December alone. Due to the climate created by the bar, the parking lot immediately adjacent to the bar has become a gathering spot for people to drink both before and after entering the bar, and in that parking lot, we have nineteen instances of individuals under the age of twenty-one in possession of alcohol in that parking lot, also two individuals in possession of drugs as well. There have been well over a hundred calls for service to this particular establishment for noise, fights, assaults on officer, an assault on officer, and there was a shooting in November of two thousand and thirteen in the bar. Resolution zero-two-eight-two-X-two-thousand-and-thirteen, permit number seven-eight-seven-eight-two-nine-six. It's held by Shrock Road Drive-Thru Incorporated, and is doing business as the Shrock Road Drive-Thru at fourteen-fifty-seven Shrock Road. At this establishment, we have evidence of seven undercover purchases of bath salts from the clerks there at the Shrock Road Drive-Thru. Again, in this instance, a warrant was executed, and law enforcement found bath salts and three guns at this location. In addition, we have multiple counterfeit DVD instances where they are selling, possessing and selling counterfeit DVDs and CDs. Resolution zero-two-eight-three-X-two-thousand-and-thirteen. That is permit number nine-nine-two-two-six-eight-nine. That is held by Zeros Incorporated, and is doing business as the Smoke-In Shop at twenty-four-twenty-one Sullivan Avenue. This location, we have evidence of ten instances of food stamp fraud, nine instances of buying stolen property for resale, and five instances of sale or possession of synthetic drugs. Of those criminal activities, three have included the illegal transaction of alcohol, eight have involved the illegal transaction of tobacco. In addition, there is also evidence of lottery fraud at the Smoke-In Shop. Those twelve are the new permit objections. We have two more that are renewal objections. These were objected to last year. The hearings were held in front of the Division, and we have yet to receive a ruling, so we're going to renew our objections again. Resolution zero-two-eight-four-X-two-thousand-and-thirteen. That is permit number two-eight-five-zero-six-three-eight, held by fourteen-ninety-three West Broad Incorporated. That is doing business as the West Broad Carryout at fourteen-ninety-three West Broad. The hearing was held on May twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen, and we have yet to receive a ruling in that matter. Lastly, we have resolution zero-two-eight-five-X-two-thousand-and-thirteen. That is permit number two-four-zero-five-four-nine-five. That's held by East Side Fish and Produce, and is doing business as Southeast Fish and Produce at nine-eighty-one East Livingston Avenue. Again, this hearing was held on September twelfth, two thousand and thirteen. We have no ruling yet. And that concludes the information I have on the permits being objected to this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Spurlaza. I appreciate not only tonight's efforts to educate the public on why these objections exist, but all of your due diligence in investigating and making sure we have legally sufficient evidence. I'm going to ask Commander Cameron to approach the podium and share some comments from the Vice Section, and certainly Detective Brown, you're welcome to join him at the podium if you'd like. I know it's been a long journey and lots of discussions on each and every one of these establishments, and I appreciate your hard work and all of the time in and the repeated visits, just to be sure we have good evidence going in. As you heard from Attorney Spurlaza just last year, we objected to some yet-to-hear decision, and that I know can be sometimes bothersome for our community, not hearing back, but you continue to go out and visit the establishments so we can object this year, certainly appreciate it. Commander Cameron, you have floor.
Chairperson Mills, President Ginther, members of council. Certainly, this, the recognition first and foremost should go to Officer Brown, Mr. Spurlaza, and members of your staff, who've gone through a great deal of effort to sort through the two-thousand-plus liquor establishments in the city to find the worst of the worst. As Mr. Spurlaza was reading the resolutions, it came to my mind, the first time I came down here on a liquor renewal objection recommendation, that's a long title, I guess. The first time I was here, you know, every bar, every liquor establishment, there were shootings, stabbings, robberies. It was just an awful mess. And so I guess, you know, the critics of this might be sitting back asking, why do we go through this? Why do we bother? And I think today might actually be a testament to that. Certainly, not to diminish the list we have before us today, but I think that the culture that council has set for our community is that we're not going to tolerate these businesses, these liquor establishments operating negligently in our city. So with your approval again tonight, we'll reinforce that culture in our community and hopefully make it a better place and a safer place to live. So thank you again for having us.
Thank you, Commander. I appreciate it, and you're absolutely right. The culture we want to set is that we have good actors and not wasteful of our community resources, the cause of the officers, Division of Police, their safety repeatedly to the same establishments is not how we want to make use of community resources. So thank you very much. Thank you to your team, and I would like to say that we probably won't see you for a couple of months, but it's been a long week, a long year in working towards this, but I think we have a good list of folks that we need to let know this is not the way to behave in our community. Thank you very much. And with that, I'll proceed to reading off, I believe, a one speaker on one ordinance, which I will call at the time in presenting that particular ordinance, beginning with ordinance zero-two-seven-two-X-dash-two-thousand-and-thirteen, to object to the renewal of liquor permit number six-two-nine-two-zero-seven-three, held by Nahil Inc., doing business as Bee's Food Mart, located at twenty-five-sixteen West Broad Street, first floor only, Columbus, Ohio, four-three-two-zero-four, and to declare an emergency. Again, another one of the establishments that have a list of misuse of the community resources, and certainly some legally sufficient evidence regarding activity at this particular establishment. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance zero-two-seven-three-X-dash-two-thousand-and-thirteen, to object to the renewal liquor permit number zero-zero-eight-four-three-six-eight, held by AJ-two-LLC, doing business as Buzz-In Buzz-Out, located at fifty-nine-twenty-five Carl Road, Columbus, Ohio, four-three-two-two-nine, and to declare an emergency. Again, not underage sales of alcohol, cigarettes, pornographic movies, and theft by deception, another list of bad actor behavior for this establishment. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, ordinance zero-two-seven-four-X-dash-two-thousand-and-thirteen, to object to the renewal liquor permit number four-four-zero-three-eight-two-three, held by JS LLC, doing business as Happy Place, located at fifty-nine-thirty-five Carl Road, Columbus, Ohio, four-three-two-two-nine, and to declare an emergency. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance zero-two-seven-five-X-dash-two-thousand-and-thirteen, to object to the renewal of liquor permit number one-four-zero-one-one-zero-zero, held by Charlie Bear Land of Dance LLC, doing business as Charlie Bear Land of Dance, partial first and second floors and patio, located at fifteen-sixty-two North High Street, Columbus, Ohio, four-three-two-zero-one, and to declare an emergency. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance zero-two-seven-six-X-dash-two-thousand-and-thirteen, to object to the renewal liquor permit number one-one-seven-seven-four-nine-five-zero-zero-zero-five, held by Cadillac Boost LLC, doing business as Charlie Bear Land of Dance, located at twenty-eight-eighty-five Olin-Tangie River Road, Columbus, Ohio, four-three-two-zero-two, and to declare an emergency. This particular establishment, forty calls of service, including one officer in trouble, one assault report, one fight, and two disturbances. Eleven police reports, including homicide, assault, suicide attempt, property damage, disturbance, loud noise, and liquor offense. Again, another police-involved fatal shooting on twelve-two-two thousand and thirteen. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance two-seven-seven-X-dash-two-thousand-and-thirteen, to object to the renewal liquor permit number zero-zero-nine-zero-five-four-nine, held by Al Wadat LLC, doing business as Eureka Market, located at one-ninety-two South Eureka Avenue, first floor, Columbus, Ohio, four-three-two-zero-four, and to declare an emergency. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance zero-two-seven-eight-X-dash-two-thousand-and-thirteen, to object to the renewal of liquor permit number eight-zero-six-zero-one-four-six, held by Shazad Mart Inc., doing business as Food Max, located at seventeen-seventy-six Parsons Avenue, Columbus, Ohio, four-three-two-zero-seven, and to declare an emergency. In this particular establishment, there are criminal records of associated individuals, including felonies engaged in corrupt activity, and sanitary conditions, and warrants executed at this establishment, five cases receiving stolen property, twenty cases with EBT violations. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance zero-two-seven-nine-X-dash-two-thousand-and-thirteen, to object to the renewal liquor permit number three-nine-five-three-three-zero-four, held by Home Market LLC, doing business as Home Market, located at twenty-three-eighty-six Groveport Park, first floor only, Columbus, Ohio, four-three-two-zero-seven, and to declare an emergency. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance zero-two-eight-zero-X-dash-two-thousand-and-thirteen, to object to the renewal of liquor permit number eight-one-nine-nine-nine-two-seven, held by sixteen-fifty Parsons, Inc., doing business as Parsons Market, located at sixteen-fifty Parsons Avenue, Columbus, Ohio, four-three-two-zero-seven, and to declare an emergency. I believe I have a speaker on this particular ordinance, Ms. Linda Henry. Ms. Henry, if you will, approach the podium. Ms. Henry, if you'll state your first and last name and your address and any organizations you represent. You have three minutes to discuss resolution zero-two-eight-zero-X-dash-two-thousand-and-thirteen.
I'm Linda Henry. I'm six-thirty-four Southwood Avenue, and I represent many areas of the South Side, and I'm representing the South Side on this. And good evening, President Ginther and members of council. The problem with Parsons Market is it's not only what goes on inside, but also what goes on outside. This is a magnet for gangs, gang members, drugs, prostitution, pimps, you name it, it's there. I have seen this day in and day out for years. It's not getting any better here. You go by there, and you see T-shirts hanging from the ceiling. Took forever to get the graffiti off of the walls. The communities have tried to work with Parsons Market, and they just look at you and say, "Oh, what doesn't bother me? Well, it shouldn't bother you." Well, it bothers us because we are trying to represent a clean city and South Side. We're trying to build our South Side back up, and by objecting to this liquor license is going to do that. We need to get this taken care of, and hopefully maybe even closed down eventually. I see people across the street in vacant apartments, apartment porches, drunk and passed out from going over there and buying their alcohol. They wave at you sometimes, say, "Hey, how's it going?" and stuff like that. I have taken pictures of them, and it doesn't faze them. So I'm glad to see that this is happening, and also at Food Max, too, because something needs to be done to better our communities and to get our communities clean and strong again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Henry. I appreciate your comments, and I would like to remind the community that I appreciate the efforts of working with the owners. We certainly want to support business, but we want to support those who are supporting their neighborhoods as well. I encourage the block watch groups and area commissioners to say thanks to those who are performing well and being good neighbors, as well as informing us of those who are not being good neighbors. So I appreciate all of your work. If there are no other, I wanted to, I'm sorry, before I move for passage, and add a little bit more context related to Parsons Market. Twenty-seven cases of EBT violations, theft by deception, eight cases of receiving stolen property, criminal records of associated individuals, and liquor prohibitions and engaging in corrupt activity. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance zero-two-eight-one-X-dash-two-thousand-and-thirteen, to object to the renewal of liquor permit number seven-two-four-six-nine-six-nine, held by Red Zone Twelve LLC, doing business as Red Zone, located at three-zero-three South Front Street, Columbus, Ohio, four-three-two-one-five, and to declare an emergency. Another established twenty cases of underage possession of alcohol, two cases of open container, and a shooting on November tenth, two thousand and thirteen. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein, Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance zero-two-eight-two-X-dash-two-thousand-and-thirteen, to object to the renewal of liquor permit number seven-eight- Next have ordinance 0282X-2013 to object to the renewal liquor permit number 7878296 held by Schrock Road Drive-Thru Inc. doing business at Schrock Road Drive-Thru located at 1457 Schrock Road, Columbus, Ohio 43229 and to declare an emergency. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Next have ordinance 0283X-2013 to object to the renewal of liquor permit number 9922689 held by Zorius Inc. doing business as Smoke &amp; Shop located at 2421 Sullivan Avenue, Columbus, Ohio 43204 and to declare an emergency. Five cases of illegal sale and possession of dangerous drugs, ten cases with EBT violations, alcohol given at no cost selling counterfeit goods. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Next have ordinance 0284X-2013 to object to the renewal liquor permit number 2850638 held by 1493 West Bra Inc. doing business as West Bra Carryout located at 1493 West Broad Street, Columbus, Ohio 432222 and to declare an emergency. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Next have ordinance 0285X-2013 to object to the renewal liquor permit number 2405495 held by Eastside Fish &amp; Produce Inc. doing business at Southeast Fish &amp; Produce located at 981 East Livingston Avenue, Columbus, Ohio 43205 and to declare an emergency. This objection was requested by Livingston Avenue Area Commission, Driving Park Civic Association, and the City Attorney's Own Team. Twenty-one stolen property cases, illegal possession of EBT and WIC, illegal use of EBT, bad check, underage sales, and several citizen complaints. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
That concludes the liquor objection portion of legislation presented for public safety and judiciary. I have the following ordinances, beginning with 2714-2013. To accept ordinance number 2714-2013, the Fire Management Compensation Plan effective January 1, 2014 and to declare an emergency. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Next have ordinance 2715-2013 to accept ordinance number 2715-2013, the Police Management Compensation Plan effective January 1, 2014 and to declare an emergency. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Next have ordinance 2725-2013 to authorize an appropriation of funds in the Photo Red Light Fund to authorize the Finance and Management Director to issue a purchase order to upstate wholesale supply doing business as Bright Computers for the purchase of Fujitsu laptops, warranties, and mounting parts for the Division of Police from an existing universal term contract to authorize expenditure of $287,857.75 from the Photo Red Light Fund and to declare an emergency. Of this purchase, twenty-nine units will allow for some replacements of existing laptops and a small inventory of spare so Police Net can install another unit into a cruiser if a laptop is not working. The availability of spare equipment will allow for cruisers to be back, put back in service in just a few minutes. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Next have ordinance 2778-2013 to authorize acceptance of an extension and supplemental grant award from the Franklin County Board of Commissions, Offices of Homeland Security and Justice Programs for the 2013 VAWA Stalking Investigative Grant Program in the amount of $4,938. To authorize a transfer of matching funds in the amount of $2,312 from the General Fund to authorize the appropriation expenditure of funds in a total amount of $7,250.53. To authorize the City Attorney to modify a contract with Secure Investigative Solutions LLC for services under the grant to waive the competitive procurement provisions of Columbus City Codes and to declare an emergency. This will further authorize the City Attorney to modify and extend an existing contract with Secure Investigative Solutions LLC for stalking investigative services under this said grant and the waiver of competitive procurement provisions. An additional match is required for this grant. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Next I have ordinance 2868-2013 to authorize acceptance of a grant award from the Franklin County Board of Commissions, Offices of Homeland Security and Justice Programs for the 2014 VAWA Stalking Investigator Grant Program in the amount of $49,022.42. To authorize a transfer of matching funds in the amount of $16,340.67. To authorize the appropriation and expenditure of grant funds in a total amount of $65,363. To authorize the City Attorney to enter into a contract with Secure Investigative Services LLC for services under the grant to waive the competitive procurement provisions of the Columbus City Codes and to declare an emergency. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Next have ordinance 2899-2013 to authorize and direct the City of Columbus Director of Finance and Management to issue a purchase order to Agilent Technologies for Agilent Chem Station software upgrades for the Division of Police Crime Lab in accordance with the provisions of sole source procurement to authorize expenditure of $4,012.40 from the General Government Grant Fund and to declare an emergency. The Division of Police Crime Lab needs to purchase Agilent Chem Station software upgrades for two GCMS systems that are used to identify controlled substances. The computers that are currently operating these two GCMS systems are still running on Windows 2000. The Police Net and DOT have advised the Crime Lab that the city no longer has licenses for Windows 2000, so if either of the GC or MS systems were to crash, they would be unable to help the Crime Lab. Police Net has two new Windows 7 computers available to replace the two Windows 2000 computers. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Next have ordinance 2914-2013 to authorize and direct the City Auditor to transfer $250,000 from the Columbus City Council Jobs Growth Fund, Fund 15, to the Franklin County Municipal Court Judges. To authorize the Franklin County Municipal Court Judges through the administrative and presiding judge to contract with Alvis House to continue providing a work release program as an alternative for incarceration consistent with public safety to authorize the appropriation expenditure of up to an amount not to exceed $250,000 and to declare an emergency. In 2011, Columbus City Council provided the Municipal Court Judges with funding to continue work release program started in 2009. The work release program through a contract with Alvis House provides an alternative to incarceration consistent with public safety in the Franklin County Municipal Court. This enhanced probation program allows individuals to serve their sentence while offering the opportunity to retain their current employment, reducing the risk of recidivism and promoting continued economic development in our city. This legislation authorized the transfer appropriation and this expenditure from the Columbus City Council Jobs Growth Fund to the Franklin County Municipal Court Judges. In 2009, the State of Ohio provided the necessary money to start the program. The work release program allows defendants with jobs to remain productive citizens. I'd like to ask, co-sponsored this ordinance, Councilmember Klein, if he has any comments you'd like to add.
Thank you Chair Mills. Nothing other than to recognize the work that you do and the municipal court does in utilizing the Alvis House and the work release program as an effective way of administering justice while at the same time understanding that being employed while serving your sentence can be a benefit not only economically to the city, but also to the families and victims of those maybe paying restitution to. So, thank you Councilmember Mills, Chair Mills.
Thank you Councilmember Klein. Just to remind folks that while individuals participating in the program continue to be employed, this allows them not only to keep their job, but to also pay taxes, their child support mortgages, and et cetera. And again, it also means that when they are released, they have continued gainful employment and do not have to look for new work, which would be more difficult with jail time being on their record. The work release program continues to help individuals from falling into a cycle of crime because they're retaining employment opportunities that were available to them prior to serving their jail sentence. I ask that Judge Barrows provide comments and then I'll provide her comments from other councilmembers. Judge Barrows?
Councilwoman Mills, President Ginther, members of council, thank you for the opportunity. I know that you've got a long agenda tonight. I know that I've been here before talking about and praising this program and most of you understand it well. This is a savings to the city. The sheriff charges $79 a night to keep people in jail. Alvis House charges $62 a night to keep those people there. So, not only is it costing the city a savings of $17 per night, per bed, per person, they are also able to continue working and paying taxes and supporting their families and their community in that way. So, it's a win-win all the way around. I passed out something earlier for each of you to see. It's a one-page Excel spreadsheet. I'm sorry for the size of the type, Councilmember Paley. But I brought this as an example. If you look at the columns that are starting with one down to 21, those are people who are currently, as of this afternoon, currently in the program. Out to the right of that, you'll see some other names listed. Those are the people that are queued up for those bed spaces and the dates that they will enter. And our staff person who does this keeps track of who's coming up and designates them a bed space ahead of time. This also shows that if today, a judge down at the municipal court wanted somebody to start work release program today, there were three beds available to move them into. So, we're managing that at the 25. And I know particularly Councilmember Tyson, you had some questions about that. I'm informed by Mr. Roth that that's a manageable limit and it's consistent with the funding. If we go over that, Alvis House usually is able to find a bed for us right away. Their other two users are the federal court and the common police court. The place is rarely full. And my staff person says that she probably could work with more folks, especially since we're about to buy her some GPS units to put ankle monitors on the people that are in. Part of her obligation is go to the job sites where they are and check on them, which uses up a lot of her time. We're about to use technology to make her time a little bit more efficient. And also, having something on your ankle is a real deterrent. If you decide you want to go across the street for a beer, we're going to know where you went on your break from work. So, we're working hard to make it work better and I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Thank you Judge Barrows. I believe Councilmember Paley has comments, I believe Councilmember Tyson has as well. So, Judge, if you could remain in place. Councilmember Paley?
Thank you Councilmember Mills. I want to congratulate you and the judges at Municipal Court for all that you have done for alternative resolutions to our criminal cases in the municipal court. We should be proud of what you have done down there in saving money and saving lives, not only with this program, but with all of the specialty dockets also. It's really enlightening to see such an innovative court trying to give people alternatives and ways to be productive members of our society. I'm proud of it and I think you should be proud of it too. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Paley.
Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you Chairman, Chairwoman Mills. And Judge Barrows, thank you for providing this information from the hearing we had just the other night. And I agree that we're certainly saving dollars, but also we're giving individuals an opportunity to continue to work, to be able to be contributors to the city of Columbus. So, I appreciate the program and certainly you're working with a great organization, the Alvis House. So, thank you so very much.
Thank you Councilmember Tyson. My view of our court is that we're here to help people not come back to court. And this kind of program, as well as the specialty dockets, are ways that we can reduce recidivism and make our community a better place.
Thank you Judge Barrows. If there are, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Craig?
Thank you very much Chairwoman Mills. Let me also thank you for your work Judge Barrows. Part of the specialty courts are the veterans' courts, the court as well, and as the other specialty courts. And certainly, comments have already been made. I would only be acknowledging the obvious, but certainly we appreciate all that you are doing. It does indeed help to rebuild lives and we're very appreciative for your work and your leadership.
I'll accept your gratitude as a representative of the court. Thank you, sir.
Thank you Judge Barrows. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you all.
Thank you Judge. Next have ordinance 2919-2013 to accept the letter of agreement between the city and the Fraternal Order of Police, Capital City Lodge Number Nine, regarding health benefits plan enhancements effective January 1, 2014 and to declare an emergency. In accordance with the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act of 2010, the City of Columbus will provide for designated health benefits plan enhancements effective January 1, 2014. The passage of this ordinance indicates council's acceptance of the letter of agreement between the city and the Fraternal Order of Police, FOP, Capital City Lodge Number Nine, signed by the designated representatives. Emergency action is recommended in order to implement the terms of the letter of agreement in a timely manner. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Next have ordinance 2940-2013 to accept the letter of agreement between the city and the Columbus Firefighters Union Local 67, IAFF Local 67, regarding the health benefits plan enhancements effective January 1, 2014 and to declare an emergency. As similarly discussed from relationship to police, the passage of this ordinance indicates council's acceptance of the letter of agreement. And again, emergency action is recommended in order to implement the terms of the letter of agreement in a timely manner. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Next have ordinance 2942-2013 to accept the letter of agreement between the city and the Fraternal Order of Police, Ohio Labor Council Inc., regarding the health benefits plan enhancements effective January 1, 2014, to declare an emergency. The passage of this ordinance indicates our acceptance of this letter of agreement between the city, Fraternal Order of Police, and the Ohio Labor Council, signed again by the designated representatives. As mentioned before, emergency action is recommended for timely, for implementation in a timely manner. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Madam Chair, I think we have a speaker on this?
On 2942, President? I'm not showing a speaker. I'm showing a speaker.
No speaker?
On 2943.
Next one. Got it.
Thank you, President Ginther.
Moved and seconded. Call the roll.
Craig Klein Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Passed.
Thank you. Next I have 2943. To authorize the Director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into contract with the Community Crime Patrol, Inc., to expand citizen patrolers to assist the Division of Police in the control and prevention of crime in select neighborhoods to require council approval of such plan for expanded services to authorize and direct the appropriation and expenditure of $300,000 from Columbus City Council Jobs Growth Fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is being co-sponsored by Councilmember Klein. Now, I ask Councilmember Klein if you have any comments and ask Ellen Moore to proceed to the podium while I share a little bit about this ordinance. The duration of this contract will be negotiated by the Director and the funding will certainly allow the Director to designate to work with CCP to develop a plan to expand these services. The legislation authorized the appropriation expenditure of $300,000. Ellen Moore, Director of Community Crime Patrol, welcome to council.
Thank you.
If you would share your first and last name and the organization you represent. You have three minutes to speak on ordinance 2943.
Ellen Moore, 248 East 11th Avenue, and I represent Community Crime Patrol. President Ginther, Safety Chair Mills, and members of council, it's my pleasure again to speak to you about Community Crime Patrol as we begin our 24th year of service to the residents of Columbus's neighborhoods. With the great support of this council, in 2013, we worked a total of just over 45,000 hours in the University District, South Clintonville, Marion Village, German Village, Franklinton, the Hilltop, the Northland, North London area, and downtown. In November of this year, we added a new patrol site in the Old Town East Franklin Park neighborhood. And through this budget amendment, we'll be able to continue all of these projects and more in 2014. In the first 11 months of 2013, the patrolers have been an integral part in the arrests of seven persons, including a drunk driver, robbery suspect, and two persons with active warrants. They recovered several missing children and reported four fires. They've assisted dozens of injured people, calling medics out at least 16 times this year. And over 6,400 people have been helped by the patrolers either with car trouble directions or just exchanging information about what's going on in their neighborhood. Our unique partnerships with city agencies continue. Through the 311 system, we've reported over 2,600 code violations and over 2,000 environmental issues such as burned-out streetlights and water leaks. We will never know how many crimes we've deterred just by being a presence. We will never know how many crimes we've deterred just by being a presence on the streets. We continue to strengthen our partnerships with the Columbus Division of Police, dozens of neighborhood block watch groups, civic associations, and area commissions. We applied for and were granted a new two-year stipend from the United Way to fund part of our patrol in the Northland-North London area, as well as a successful bid to retain our current United Way funding for the Franklinton area. Our minority recruiting efforts have been quite successful as well. Of the 42 people currently on staff, 27% are persons of color. Half the staff are either female or a person of color. I am pleased to report that we have sent 43 former CCP employees to the Columbus Division of Police. I want to publicly thank the Division of Police for their support of CCP over the years. Their interaction with the patrolers is what makes this program unique and so successful in making these neighborhoods safer. We are the extra eyes and ears for the police. We are a force multiplier and a cost-effective program that supplements the city's safety efforts. Thank you so much for the opportunity to talk again about one of the city's best assets, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Director Moore. I appreciate it, and I'm glad you added some of the features that you and I continue to discuss about and what we like to see from the folks who join your team. And considering a career with the Columbus Division of Police, it's a good recruitment effort for us as we try to work to diversify and add more members to the Division of Police. It's good to know when they come to us, they have some community background and interaction with community groups, and it certainly helps as they move forward and when they join the ranks of the Columbus Division of Police. So thank you for adding comments. I'll offer other council members any other comments or questions. Thank you, Director Moore. If there are no other comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
That concludes ordinances in public safety and judiciary for this evening. I wanted to again thank the city attorney and his team through the liquor objection process. It is a good bit of time, energy, and commitment in following up on the concerns of our citizens, as I know city attorney Pfeiffer does, and it is certainly clear in the members and his team in his office, because they continue to reach out and are diligent in working on behalf of the citizens. So I want to thank the folks in his office. Thanks to Columbus Division of Police, liquor objections is one of those pieces we've worked hard on. The Department of Public Safety, as we've worked on several initiatives this year, liquor objections not being a small part of that. Thank you again. That's all I have this evening by way of ordinances.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. Our next committee is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. Councilmember Paley chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginther. And Public Service and Transportation, this evening, we have ordinance 2430-2013 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish a purchase order for the purchase of one spray lining truck with MB Companies Incorporated, to waive competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus Code, and to authorize expenditure of $482,914 from the Street and Highway Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes the purchase of one line spraying truck for the Division of Planning and Operation. Line spraying trucks are used for line striping of the city's streets and roadways. This equipment will replace a unit that is beyond its useful service life and provide for more reliable equipment to carry out services provided by the division. Two bids were received. The delay in award recommendation was due to in-depth review of low bidder and concerns of purchasing the CNG-powered vehicle without proper facility to house it. The Department of Public Service is requesting a bid waiver because the bids are now expired. There is insufficient time to conduct a new bid process, and there is no indication that a new bid would provide a better result. I would like to thank Director Davies and her team for their leadership on this project. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 2462-2013 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to establish a contract for the purchase of speed indication equipment from the Intuitive Control System LLC, and to waive competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, authorize the expenditure of $125,900 for the Street and Highway Bonds Fund, and to declare an emergency, to authorize the expenditure of $125,900 from the Street and Highway Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes the purchase of speed indication equipment. The Division of Mobility Option utilizes speed indicator trailers and signs throughout the city of Columbus. This equipment will be retrofitted onto owned trailers to bring the current speed trailers up to date with technology and to make the deployment and collection of data more efficient and effective. The Department of Public Service has recommended waiving bid and negotiating a contract with All Traffic Solutions. Two bids were received for this project. Both were reviewed, and due to multiple exceptions taken by both bidders, all bids received were rejected. Both bids were reviewed based on technical specifications and product, and after review of the products, it was determined that the product and application offered by All Traffic Solutions is more cost-effective and the better product for public service and for the city. I would like to thank Director Davies and her team for their leadership on this project, and if there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
The next two ordinances are to implement the recommendations of the Short North Parking Working Group that require legislative action. The working group has been hard at work for many months, developing recommendations to reduce congestion and over-parking in permit parking areas I and V in the Short North. Residents and businesses have come up with a set of recommendations that they believe will help the city address a longstanding problem. At the public hearing I held on Wednesday to discuss this matter, we heard testimony from two of the community leaders who served on the working group. Betsy Pandora, Executive Director of the Short North Alliance, testified in support of the recommendations. Her comments, she noted that in, "This is a temporary solution in that a parking study is being conducted next year in the Short North to look at a long-term solution to the parking challenges in this thriving neighborhood." I would add that the Department of Public Service will conduct a six-month review of these recommendations, once they are implemented, to see if adjustments are needed. Larry Totsky, President of the Italian Village Society, also offered supportive testimony at the hearing. He noted that businesses, residents, and the city have comprised toward the goal of reducing the total number of vehicles that are eligible to park in these permit areas. Council action is required on the working group's 16 recommendations that others are administrative and do not require—on two of the—three of the recommendations, they don't require legislation. Those recommendations were approved unanimously by the Transportation and Pedestrian Commission. The first ordinance we will consider tonight would allow for some funds from the sale of permits to be used by the Short North Special Improvement District for communication material to help make the public aware of the new policies. The second ordinance will allow for the implementation of two of the working group's recommendations. First, it would temporarily expand permit Area V so that the residents of 641 North High Street are able to park there until their spots are available in the new Pezzuti Garage that will come online next year. And second, it would establish permit parking on portions of Hubbard and Kerr Streets to increase the number of spaces available to residents and businesses in Permit I. This is in the area of the New Hub Garage, which has provided 250 additional parking spots in the neighborhood. I would like also to take this opportunity to thank Director Davies and her staff of public service, with special thanks to Randy Bowman, who has worked really hard on this project, as well as city council staff and Adam Letty, and my aide Rebecca Barnhart. Unless—well, then we need to read the ordinances, which—2897-2013, to authorize the Director of Public Service to execute a three-year agreement with the Short North Special Improvement District of Columbus Incorporated for the design, production, and distribution of communications materials, such as flyers, signs, and various services, to inform the public about parking availability, locations, and policies in the Short North, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $3,825 from the General Fund for the Division of Mobility Options. Parking permit surcharge collection will be deposited into the General Fund, and to declare an emergency. I would first like to move to remove this ordinance from the table.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Next, ordinance 2930-2013, to amend ordinance 1909-213 to authorize the Director of Public Service to establish permit parking along the west side of Kerr Street from Hall Alley to Hubbard Avenue, and along both sides of Hubbard Avenue from Pearl Street to Kerr Street, and to declare an emergency. I would first like to move—remove this ordinance from the table.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
And move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
I would next like to direct your attention to page 7, to ordinance 2716-2013, which was removed from consent, to amend the 2013 capital improvement budget, to authorize the city auditor to transfer cash and appropriation between projects within the Street and Highway Bond Fund, and to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into a design guarantee maximum reimbursement agreement with Nation Eye Realtors Investors, LTD, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $429,199.15 from the Street and Highway Bonds Fund, and to declare an emergency. I would first like to amend to 30-day and call a voice vote.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
Then move to waive second reading by voice.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
And then move for passage by voice vote.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
That's all I have on public service and transportation. May I move on to public utilities? Next, on public utilities, I have ordinance 2589-2013 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to execute a construction contract with Darby Creek Excavating, Incorporated, for the Johnstown Road area water line improvement project, in an amount up to $2,296,930.8 for the Division of Water, and to provide for payment of inspection material, testing, and related services to the Design and Construction Division in an amount of up to $300,000, and to authorize a transfer in expenditure of up to $2,596,930.8 within the Water Works Enlargements Voted Bond Fund, the Water Build American Bonds Fund, and the Water Superbuild American Bonds Fund, and to amend the 2013 capital improvements budget. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 2644-2013 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a planned modification for the Professional Engineering Services Agreement with CH Toom Hill Engineers for the Dublin Road Water Treatment Plant, capacity increase project detailed design phase for the Division of Water, and to authorize an expenditure of up to $8 million from the Water Works Enlargement Voted Bonds Fund. If there are no questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley, President Ginther.
Next, I have ordinance 2679-2013 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into an agreement for Professional Engineering Services with DLZ Ohio for the Division of Sewage and Drainage for the East Franklinton Improvements Project, and to authorize the total project funding of up to $2,42,434.54 as follows. $1,464,378.58 from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund, $50,396.40 from the Water Works Enlargements Voted Bond Fund, $73,727.81 from the Electricity Geo Bonds Fund, and $453,931.75 from the Department of Public Service Street and Highway General Obligation Bond Fund, and to amend the 2013 capital improvements budget, and to declare an emergency. On this ordinance, I do have a speaker. I'd like to call Trent Smith to the podium. And Mr. Smith, if you can please state your name, your address, and any organizations you may represent, and you have three minutes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, Chair Paley and members of council. My name is Trent Smith. I live at 308 West Park Avenue in Franklinton. I am the Executive Director for the Franklinton Board of Trade and also on the Franklinton Area Commission. I wanted to speak on this ordinance tonight because I think that this is one of the most important things that we're doing right now in the Franklinton neighborhood, is now looking at infrastructure. And this is going to allow businesses who may have been thinking about moving to Franklinton to have the great confidence, knowing that if they do choose this neighborhood, that they're going to have reliable services to back up the claims that we're making about the progress in the revitalization of the area, which are very much moving at a—exceeding momentum. And indeed, I want to—as we begin to close out 2013, I just want to recognize that on tonight's agenda, there are several items that are directly impacting in a very positive way the neighborhood of Franklinton, from the liquor license objections to the Community Crime Patrol ordinance to this infrastructure. And I also want to recognize all of the great support that we've had from city council, and also especially the city attorney's office, working with both the Board of Trade and the area commission on just different and various issues that have been problematic for the neighborhood, but that are going down the road rapidly to seeing success and resolutions. And I also want to point out that I was very proud today to be able to be part of a ribbon-cutting ceremony for a brand-new small business that just opened at 956 West Broad Street, which was previously a longtime vacant storefront, and it's now occupied by Becky's Bakery. And I'm also very proud to announce that we expect next spring that we'll have a brand-new bike shop opening on West Broad Street as well. And these are small businesses. These are, you know, salt-of-the-earth businesses who are going to be able to help repopulate the street, put more eyes on the street, which directly impacts safety, and also bring a whole new set of patrons to the neighborhood, who are going to be there specifically for those shops, but then have the opportunity to look around and see what else is surrounding them, and be impressed by the progress that we've made. So I simply just want to say that I appreciate the support we've had from you. I look very much forward to 2014 as we continue down this road. And the area commission, the Board of Trade, and as a resident especially, I just want to, you know, thank the support from the city and hope for continued success. Thank you.
Any comments? Mr. Smith, I would like to also thank you for all the work that you've done. I know that every time that I'm in Franklinton, you're there to greet me. So thank you for your strong community leadership in Franklinton and elsewhere. With that said, if there are no other questions or comments, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Paley Tyson, President Ginther.
That's all I have on public utilities this evening. President Ginther.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Our next committee is the Rules and Reference Committee. I chair that committee. First, we have 2808-2013 to make various amendments to ordinance 2813-2012 to modernize city procurement of goods and services through the enactment of new chapter 329 of the Columbus City Codes, to repeal prior existing ordinance 2813-2012, to approve the scoring matrix for responsibility prequalification, to repeal existing chapter 329 Columbus City Codes, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance represents the joint efforts of the administration and council to revise and modernize the city's quality contracting code pertaining to construction contracts. We've been working on this for the better part of two years, gauged both internal and external stakeholders, and benefited from significant public input throughout this process. I'd like to offer Director Rakowski an opportunity to make any comments.
President Ginther, members of council, this is kind of the fruition here of a two-year process that we've been working very closely with council staff and city council members on. We've encountered some issues as we've moved along the way that needed to be corrected. We've wrestled with some definitions and to ensure that we had the correct definitions and that we were doing the things that we wanted to do in this code change and make it work for all of the folks that it's going to affect out there, all of our partners out in the community that we do business with here at the city. So I'm just excited to get this passed and start moving forward in the process of working with all of these firms and working to get them prequalified before the program takes effect in January of 2015. We have a lot of work to do. We have put together a very competent staff to begin that process, but we believe we'll probably have some more hiccups along the way, and we appreciate council's willingness to work with us to correct any of those issues that come up along the way as we begin to implement the program.
Thank you, Director, for your comments and your commitment to this process. I'd actually like to, also like to give a special thanks to Rory McGinnis with the Mayor's Office, Susanna Gussler, Sherry Hall, Bianca Bell with Finance and Management, Jenny Gams with the City Attorney's Office, and Brian Clark in council's Legislative Research Office. We wouldn't be here tonight, and this wouldn't be possible without their expertise, patience, and partnership. So if there are any comments or questions from council members, I move for passage. Clerk, call the roll.
Craig Klein Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
Passed. Councilmember Mills, you have a piece of legislation to bring forth for consideration.
Thank you, President Ginther. Tonight in Rules and Reference, I'd like to present ordinance 2929-2013 to amend various sections in Chapters 585, 587, 591, 592, 593, and 594 of the Columbus City Code into an act new section, 593.06 of the Columbus City Code, in order to allow for the operation of mobile application-based transportation services relating to livery vehicles. Earlier this year, the state legislature changed state law so that livery services were no longer required to charge an hourly rate. This change opened the door for a new transportation model to enter the Ohio market, mobile application-based transportation services that are more formerly known by their, some of the industry leaders. This fall, mobile application-based transportation companies expressed interest in working with the city to become part of Columbus Vehicle for Hire industry. Through multiple discussions with the administration and the hard-working members of the Vehicle for Hire Board, it was determined that the best course of action would be to amend sections of the code to allow for mobile application-based transportation companies to operate in the city's livery industry. The changes will also allow current livery companies to be dispatched by phone or mobile applications. One of the changes in Chapter 593 will make the location of the decal on livery vehicles to be determined by rules and regulations rather than in code. This same change will be made to Chapters 591, 592, and 594 so that they are consistent with Chapter 593. I want to take this time to thank the Public Safety Department of folks and licensing, and again, the members of the Vehicle for Hire Board for working to get to this point. It has been a long journey over the past year working in this particular industry to modernize, update, and move forward the industry that supports not only our citizens now, but also our visitors. This Vehicle for Hire's work is intricate to making sure all of that works within that industry. And certainly want to thank all of the council staff, because I know that the Mills team has worked very hard with the Vehicle for Hire changes, but it certainly takes some updating and engaging with the other council offices, and I appreciate the time spent in listening to all the changes and the things that we are putting forward today. If there are no comments or questions, I move for passage.
Craig Klein Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
That's all I have for Rules and Reference. President Ginther.
Thank you, Councilmember Mills. It's the last piece of legislation for the year. If there's nothing else to come before council, I'd like to wish everyone happy holidays, Happy New Year. We'll see you back here in 2014. We do, of course, have one non-agenda speaker we'll take momentarily, but I intend a motion to adjourn. Clerk, call the roll.
Craig Klein Mills, Pele Tyson, President Ginther.
We stand adjourned.